All right. I'd like to bring this meeting into the Bethel Board of Selectmen on June 3rd, 2019. We'd like to start with the Citizens Forum. Anyone have anything they'd like to discuss that isn't on the regular agenda? Seeing none? No? You do?
Well, I don't know when it's hoping. My name is Tom Lynch here. I'm the administrator for my county. I came by to say hello.
Okay.
And to ask something. I don't know whether it was hopefully...
We've got you here, but it doesn't really matter when it fits in.
Okay. Basically, as you know, we pay the town of Bethel for providing tire protection and annual services in all these towns, including Elton, Mason, and I think through Riley. But I had a good chance to be in the City of Selectmen, and I really wanted to do that. And I understand I have not paid you about $8,000 in all of this. But some dollars and three hundred dollars, which is rarely a rush for service.
I believe that came in a week ago.
Well, obviously, it's going to be two and four efficient.
It's always good to have.
Well, we know that we've been going through, as you might have gradually heard, we've had some changes in our accounting system. So during the period where we were reorganizing, we missed some of the discarded buildings that we didn't have. We reacted well to people's attempts to build, but I think perhaps the policy had been for the municipalities we deal with that they need to simply check that halfway through this period. And I wanted to, first of all, thank you for providing services for us. Remind you that our fee or what we pay you is not necessarily indicative of the cost of providing services, but whether a fee that we commission is really... So you're there when you need it. So if you're fortunate enough, if you're fortunate enough not to have any cost, then the value of your services is in the sense. And so we really do appreciate that. And the commission will want to express that by keeping track of the value of services. And as we're going down next year, we're getting ready to start a budget process. And I hope that one of your site persons will at least become involved with the budget process and escort the initial hearings to see whether your peers want to hear them or not. We really depend on your group to help us make a budget and decide everything from our pocket for a month. Just so you understand, or if you don't understand how an organized territory budget works, the legislature, the local elected municipal, approves a budget for the period that starts June 1st and runs through, I'm sorry, July 1st and runs through June 3rd. And then we will start working on that, over the next year, essentially internally through our regular legislation, which will run from August to September through the first of the year. And so it's hard for us to adjust the advantages for the new thing, an organized territory, at this period of time. But we want to let you folks know that if you have a concern or interest in being more involved in that, we can take it in. That's it. If you have anything in concerns or questions about the organized territory or if you have one now, I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
We appreciate your letting us... Oh, I have a copy of... Do you have a copy of the agreement between the county and the...
The sheriff's department?
Well, no, that one, that's another... That's right. Rather big job. And no, that one I'm not concerned about. Because I think you guys are working on a renewal agreement.
Yeah, leaving it as is, like last year.
Yeah. And I think, if I understand, there were some minor tweaks that people worried about. No, I was... The agreement that we had with emergency medical services.
I do not have a copy of that one.
Okay. It's one of those deals where we, if it's not modified by us by the end of the third year, then it just continues on.
Okay.
But it's really... So I'm looking over, given the site locations, we've got changing things that we're able to publicly do and talk about. We basically have the same agreement with the other towns that provide services. We do have, and over provide, we do some work with the municipal road crew on some of these roads here, generate, that's contracted out by the people, the organized territory. We do have some major road improvements, but mostly we're focusing on interest up in Easton Hill sometime.
It's an eventual run.
Think of the guy driving the pod car.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's move on to approval of minutes. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Perhaps you already know, but the legislation that was in the legislature regarding charter and the public access stations was passed in favor of the public access stations. So we're hoping, the board is hoping, and as Bethel's representative for the board, I just want to say that we're hoping that maybe the board can be involved with some input in the contract that we do decide to make.
We open. All right. Anything else for the Citizens Forum? All right. I'd like to move on to approval of minutes.
I'll talk about that later.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. This time I'd like to open a public hearing for Victroler's licenses for Cho Sun, Hungry Mama, Lemieux Eats, Bethel House of Pizza, and Sunday River Station.
Can we also add the Gem to that? I bet they're big for that.
And Gem Theater. So these are Victroler's licenses. Any comments from the public on any of those applications? All right. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time and go to the Board of Selectmen.
I make a motion that we approve that the call basis put on one's name.
One second. Any further discussion?
They don't think it should be in order, I'm sure?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor? And this time I'd like to order, open another public hearing, this time for Lodging Houses, Bethel Village Motel, and Coverdale, Coverdale House. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time and...
I make a motion to exclude the lodging housing establishment.
One second. Any further discussion? Is all settled then?
Yes, it is.
All right. All those in favor? Move to public hearings. All right. So moving on to any further discussion, possible action. We set the six-month meeting schedule. You have a list of dates. Any comments?
I make a motion that we extend the six-month meeting schedule to us.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next, we need to move on. We have two bids for inspector for the Chapman Street project.
And Eric Fabel, is he on Mainland? Is there a question?
All right. And Eric Fabel, Eric is all here from Maine, this year in Mainland.
Is there a reason for the three levels of inspectors?
Yeah. Our coach is really... I shouldn't say so, given you, because I was even back when I was in college, I was inspector myself. So we have some senior level people over the city, lower level people that are doing a lot of the quantities and making sure that nothing's going wrong on site. And they could reach out to somebody more experienced if necessary. It helps keep the cost of inspection, costs of inspection can be equal to the cost of the design often. So, you know, we try to get a little creative. And, you know, back when I would work, I worked for Easy Jordan, maybe you know that firm, but it's, we're still a company, Easy Jordan, we're all just... But it was basically, it was a way to get some junior people there with some senior people there. So what we're doing is trying to limit the amount of time I spend. I've been, you know, installed works for 30 years. I've been a public inspector, I've also been at City AGF for the order in different communities. And that's all well and good. I've seen them, I've done a lot of that kind of work. But probably not the best out of the few folks to put me on the job. So it's really, so we have mid-level staff engineers, I have myself, I oversee everyone. But my involvement would be, you know, we're estimating 10% involvement in a project based on what are the critical factors that needs to be addressed, what contractual issues need to be addressed, what certain tests that need to be done to make sure that we can get the project and the pipe installation is done to our standards. So there's pressure testing, there's coordination, there's different things happening before the project is closed out so that one, you don't have infiltration under sewer pipes, two, that the coordination is unproper with water mains. And those, and the pressure testing, you also make sure that you don't have a roll, sorry to get into the details of a roll, sometimes you'll have a roll joint or something that will offer water leak that can go unseen and tell contractors, go on unless, you know, unless we do this kind of testing, make sure it's happening and that we're aware about our work. So we're not even anticipating that this person will be unnecessarily full-time. It depends on the type of workplace going on. But it depends on what you focus. Certainly, we're very flexible as to the level of supervision we'd like to have on, but I can understand right now, so we were doing, so when we show up in a rainy day, we might be doing this certain days, we just wouldn't be here at all. No presence at all, we'd be overly compressed. It's not, to say that we wouldn't be open responses or... But that's the reason. So that's how we get, we get to keep that cost down. And also, you also get, you know, 30 years of experience also when you're seeing the project, where you just kind of incentivize them on the job.
And how many people would you be involved in?
Three of us is what we're anticipating, depending on, you know, our interns would be the primary person, as we showed on there. And then you have a staff, two engineers would have two, three years of experience on top of that. And then you have me that would have 30 years, but I'm trying to, you know, only be there for the critical times.
And these other staff, would enhance the expertise to know what needs to be done?
Yeah, these are all professional engineers as well, not professional engineers. These are the ITs, which is usually professional engineers, who need to have four or five years of experience before you can sit without a second seat.
Okay.
But these are all staff that just work for us right now. And they're, you know, work on a daily basis, work to design projects, so they understand what's going on in the ground. But, you know, so what I'm bringing to the table is the municipal aspect of it. I do have maybe different minds on municipal projects. And sometimes on the fact that I always said, we design and we sound, I would make a payment which is to make sure that I run the operations to stay proper as well. So it's sort of make it different and make sure that if there's design changes, we want to make this deal down as we go forward on the project and make those adjustments now.
So you see the involvement of all three levels here on a daily basis?
No. No. We're expecting, we're expecting the junior level engineers to be on-site and really just monitoring what's going on and calling in probably on a daily basis, like, is there really just involved? Yes, probably. They're going to check in. We're going to be reviewing what happened on that job site that they had again, have to monitor that. So is that top level of making sure what's going on, is information we got properly, that we have a proper record of what's going on? That is, yes, that would be happening, but my involvement's not going to be hours per day. That's just not the intent. The intent is really to have that individual be on-site when you're box cutting the road. You know, it's a lot of time for not a lot of involvement with a contractor. This is a lot of Washington, unfortunately. And I just need to know that some individuals arise, that's the reported, we're on top of that right away.
Any questions? Actually, we have to read the motion just to figure out which one of these two bids we're...
Well, I guess it seems rather wrong just that we have an estimated average cost here of roughly 72 bucks an hour. And the estimate is $100 an hour and basically says he, at some point, he may, he might need some help, as I understand it. And what is one employee, rates he can do? Just made a little participation commitment, I assume that...
No, that's, that was part of the application. Just had that in case he needed somebody else, but he did not have that. That was in the...
Oh, and that was in the actual?
Yeah.
So he thinks he's going to be...
It would be just him, yeah.
Well, it's certainly about cost and quality, I guess, and I'm very familiar with both of the terms here. Other thoughts?
Well, I don't know anything about inspections. On this, on engineering level anyways. But this is, I... I think the Mainland Development Board looks more reasonable.
Should I take a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Mainland Development for the Chapman Street reconstruction project.
I'll talk about that later.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Any questions? All right. Next on the agenda is a request from the Gem Museum, Gem and Mineral Museum for closure on part of Main Street and part of Chapman Street on Friday, July 18th. The vice chair, he denied. And if I'm not mistaken, that's, it looks like that's pretty much just across the front of the museum and then, and then off to side road?
Correct. But only up to what is now named Meteorite Landing, just so it creates sort of a block. You know, not all of Chapman Street, just part of there.
Right, right, right. Would it, so that wouldn't allow people, for example, to turn onto whatever the road is that goes behind us?
Mechanic Street?
Yeah.
High Street.
High Street, yeah, goes behind the first road, yeah.
Oh, well, I think that...
Well, they could come onto it from, they wouldn't be able to, at that intersection, they wouldn't be able to come onto Main Street. They'd have to go behind and around.
Right.
Okay. And I just want to make sure we all understand what...
Well, I was going to call it Mechanic Street, so I think you're right, it is High Street. But yes, that is correct. And there's little maps.
Right.
Have you guys seen them? In your packets?
Yeah. And what other question? This is actually probably a question of the writers, Andy Whitney asks this question. That would also require, isn't Main Street a state road? That's a problem. I mean, you'd have to go to the state and state, the state police, or maybe the sheriff.
Sheriff, Andy says the sheriff and the Main DOT.
Yeah, Main DOT and the sheriff, for the, at least for the Main Street part.
Is there any way you can, like, take it so that it's just at the, where the cars could park right there and level it off there for the front?
Well, you see, the, anyway, nice to see all of you again. Seems like we've only been here talking about building the museum and now it's actually almost complete and we will be opening sometime this summer. And the reason why we want to do this on the 19th is because it commemorates the 20th, it's the 50th anniversary of the Apollo landing, which one might ask, why that has anything to do with us and why we want to have a party or a celebration? And we're requesting that because, one, I think many of you are familiar with what is in our collection and we want to be able to literally unveil the four largest pieces of the moon that exist on the planet. Not only is that a huge event for our town, it will receive national coverage on the news. We're working with a PR firm in New York City who has, I mean, making a lot of plans for the opening and we're taking this date and using the 19th instead of the 20th, which we could have done it on the 20th, but it's Moliaca Day and we want to kind of honor what's already happening in town. So, you know, we are requesting it, it sounds like we need to go further. We were certainly under the impression that it was just asking for local support, much like, you know, they closed it for the Halloween parade, the Moliaca Day parade and everything else. So whatever we need to do, we would like to do it, but we obviously have a timeframe that we're working with. And, you know, it's just a little background too, is this whole idea of the projection, which I think you guys see in front of you, is one of the reasons why we want to close part of Main Street, is this company called Paintscapeing recognized that this project was as unique and important as it is. I mean, this is, this well-put our town on the map more than it already has. People well travel from far and wide to come to Bethel to see the museum and to see this event. But the projection would need that space in front of the museum and it would also just make it safer for the public to not have people wandering out in the road. And we would like to have food trucks and make it a really festive event. So, you know, it's not a long time for the road to be closed, but we've tried to incorporate, like, all of the reasons why it needs to happen. And one, to project well onto the building, to have people far enough away to see it. And a side note, I mean, this company is so intrigued by what we're doing here in our town that they reduced the price of their fee $56,000 to come to Bethel, Maine, to make this happen on our really small budget. And so we're definitely asking and requesting for your support and making that happen and doing it, yes, sadly, in a very expeditious fashion, so...
Just a little, just a little more detail, so where would you like the Main Street closure to start and where would you like it to end?
Well, I think it would be ideal if Brad or Jessica talked about that because they've talked more about it than I did. So this is Jessica Soraco, and you all know her.
It would be, I don't know, did you get the street map in that pocket?
No, you just got the...
Because really, it's a little over 200 feet of road closure on Main Street that we're looking at. No, it's really small. Vernon Street would still be open. The end of Chapman would be closed because we were hoping, like Barbara had mentioned, to close that end of Chapman up to Meteorite Landing to really create a true block section. So Vernon would be open. And then hoping, you know, to work with you folks or Main DOT or whoever we have to to kind of look at what the traffic flow would need to be.
So doing this would not limit anyone from getting anywhere?
No.
It looks like you could get anywhere you need to go in town?
Yeah, and we did canvas the neighborhood and get support from all our immediate neighbors and broader reach down the street, and people are really excited about this and explains the road closures and what the timing would be.
So it seems like, well, we could, we could approve the Chapman Street thing. The other piece to the Chapman Street is that it'll be under construction.
Yeah, I know when I spoke with the writer, we weren't sure when that timing was. Is there more of a...
They're supposed to start as of today. They changed it again, it's supposed to be next Monday.
Okay. Well, that might change, as we know. Dead line, okay.
So, you know, who knows what's going to be happening on Chapman Street? But I mean, but I think we can close Chapman, we can approve closing the Chapman Street piece.
But does that, my own question though, does that stall construction?
No.
When you get construction equipment, it's got to pass.
They want to close from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. So it's probably, so it's probably not a big issue.
I think our work is supposed to cease at like, such a clock, so they have to get done in the morning. Right, I think that's what's saying on contracts, it's a clock.
He said unless it's...
And it's a Friday.
Unless they're behind, then they would have to be later.
Yeah, it'll be a Friday.
Or you can make arrangements for that, so...
So I'm thinking that's not a big, so, you know, we could, the town could approve the Chapman Street part and then just express our support for the, for the Main Street piece and hope that the DOT and the sheriff's department...
Well, if you express your support, I think it would help allow them to make the decision in our favor, I hope. And, you know, part of what we're hoping to do as well is to bring food trucks and to have music there and so to kind of have a little more space for these people because I, I do believe there will be people there and the more room they have to roam, it will just create a much more pleasant and safe atmosphere for everyone.
And again, it'll be done by nine o'clock, so quiet hours shouldn't really be an issue for people, especially the buses.
And the brooks are really excited.
Yes, they are.
It will be an extremely cool kickoff to Moliaca Day.
Yeah.
Because Moliaca Day is the next day.
Yeah, correct. They could just keep the road closed right until the next morning since they're closing it anyway.
I don't think that will fly.
That's my request.
Bethel's going to be partying.
Is it closed for Moliaca Day?
For the parade, it's, I don't think we, it's not technically closed.
No, it's a lot of cars.
Okay, yeah.
For a few years, we did have vendors on Main Street and then it was closed, closed.
But it's closed for the parade, right? Well, they're not really closed.
Just going really, really closed.
There's no, it's one-way traffic during the parade.
How did they close it for the Halloween parade with Preston Park?
They don't, what was it?
They don't?
They don't go around the corner?
They come up Main Street, but the, this police escort, just through the county police escort, so it's not really closed. They don't like close it down with barricades and nobody can get through. And that's the same thing with Moliaca Day and the same thing with, like, the Gold World event that we do in September. Same idea, we have to go through Main DOT to get them to approval to have the section of Main Street. Same idea, we have to go through Main DOT to get them to approval to have the section of Main Street closed for the parade to go up here for that hour. They don't really close it with barricades, which is what you're asking to do, so I don't know. So I don't, I don't know what state would allow that, I don't know. Main DOT, but it's basically, everything that I've seen done here in Tampa, Main Street has not been barricaded, except for the Moliocca Day thing.
Yeah, we had vendors on Main Street for a few years and...
Did they, did we do that through DOT, do you know, Jessica, or?
Yeah, that was a little before my decision-making time.
I think you had to, had to, had to agree to, and like with Truck Street and Boot Academy, they had to agree to, man, the barricades became...
Volunteers there to open the gates if necessary. But this is such a short section and then, and the positioning of it is, so many different ways to get around, yeah.
So do we have a motion on this? Among the ones of perhaps approving Chapman Street closure and lending our support to the...
To approve the Main, Mineral and Gem Museum request for Chapman Street closure during their anniversary block party celebration and the Apollo exhibit.
Are we allowed to contact DOT?
Contact DOT to make sure that Main Street is viable.
And when we contact them, are we able to make reference to your approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like a good motion. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent, thank you.
Good luck with the DOT.
Yeah, I don't know, I would have, uh... All right, well, thank you.
I'll show up somewhere to...
And, yeah, and the Sheriff's Department. Yeah, all of it.
Well, great, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the BAM Youth Arts meeting at picnic tables.
So we are here with BAM Youth Arts and this is going to be the second time that we do a youth arts community art project on the Common during the art fair. Last year, we painted giant BAM letters and everybody got to take turns, it was fun. And this year, we wanted to do something a little bit more useful, I guess you'd say. So we had the idea of picnic tables, painting some picnic tables. And the reason we are here is because we thought we would start with the picnic table down at the skate park. So we would either remove that one, I haven't inspected it super close to make sure it's in good enough condition to paint, and then we would paint it and lacquer it and replace it. And then we also wanted to do another table and see if we could get permission to put a picnic table up on the Common. And that would all be paid for as part of the Youth Arts Fund, so there's no expense to the town. Kind of where we're at.
So where did you want to take the picnic table from?
We wanted to, there's a picnic table that sits at the skate park that gets tons of use.
Okay.
So we were either going to replace it with a new one and paint it or kind of take that one and paint, paint it and then put it back.
And when we repeated the letters, I took that place and I asked him, I was gonna put some orange on it, I also put it in there.
Two, one of the skate park and one up on the Common.
So it's just the two?
Yeah, so it's just there, I mean, ideally, like, since we started talking about the project, the chamber wants one, the school wants us to paint theirs, but those are all kind of private property, so we didn't feel like we would need town permission for that. And so hopefully, we'll be spreading some art love all over Bethel. But those were, the idea was someone mentioned, like, how cool to be, to put a fun artistic table up on the Common for public use, because there's really just benches up there. And then fixing that one up at the skate park, just because it's in the center.
And we were gonna have themes, I think, for each one, so the skate park would probably have a skate theme and then, you know...
So we haven't quite figured out those.
Right, right, right.
Just no swear words.
I think the basic gist is we were gonna kind of guide, guide the, the arts in a certain way.
Yes, yes, it will be guided, it will be guided.
You're not just gonna let them loose.
You can't spray paint and let them go? All right.
It sounds like a good project.
Motion to approve picnic table decorating.
Do you want to make the motion to approve BAM to have these art programs? The picnic table at the skate park? With the option of putting one on the Common?
I'll second that.
Thank you for the discussion. Give that little girl a paintbrush.
She's ready.
All those in favor? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is to talk about effective dates and penalties for the bag rubbets. Which was suggested at the public hearing that the selectmen, select board come up with a statement of how we think we would proceed with this if it passes, so that people know.
What kind of penalties are we looking at?
We haven't, yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing in the ordinance, it's just the town manager or his designated shall have primary responsibility for enforcement of the ordinance.
This shall be subject to...
Penalties established by the board of selectmen.
Yeah, so that would be us.
Originally, we did have numbers in there and the ordinance review committee just requested we take them out.
So they were like financial penalties?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, what do we, what do we do for the signed ordinance? There's a series of penalties that go along with that, you know, in the past, we've gone all the way to court on signed ordinance. It's a long time ago.
But that was before me.
What, what did you have, um...
I think it was like, I want to say it was a hundred dollars the first, more the first time? Or, I mean, I think there were warnings and then like a hundred dollars and then 250 and then 500 or maybe it was 250 and then 500, I could find my original documents.
And basically, it says here that the town manager, his designated, will issue a written warning notice to the store that violation is subject to violations of the, you know, be subject to the penalties established by the board. You get a written warning and then, right.
When I talked to the guy in Portland, he said they'd never have to issue any kind of fine ever and that people really understood, like, there was one story, people, people, kind of topped with that right away.
So the penalty is, I'll be subject to public...
Publishing.
Publishing. I'm not sure we can make that policy.
No, no, I know, but I mean, no, you have to have a coffee, but I'm just saying that, I don't think it, never will end up being a huge deal.
I, I think more important, perhaps more important than that in terms of things is to have a statement that will cover when we plan to start, when we would plan to start enforcement. So that people and businesses have a really clear heads up of, oh, we approved this, this is how it's gonna play. I think that's, I think that is important. And going back to Andy's letter, he suggested a time between six and 12 months before, before it goes into effect, to give vendors time to reconfigure to whatever they're gonna do. Do you know the date of the polystyrene phase out of the state level? Is that January 2021 or 2020?
21, 21.
So, I mean, January for us is six months, for the start of next, start of 2020 is six months.
Originally, we talked about, like, November because probably a lot of businesses are buying a lot of that kind of thing to get ready for the ski season, so like, so that they're prepared and don't get halfway through the ski season and have to change. But I, that was the original conversation we had with them, and it seemed to make sense, but...
So if we went with the six month for January, that would give them enough time to, you know, to plan for the end of November, December? Is that what you're thinking?
I, yeah, I mean, the sooner the better, I mean, I think, but, I mean, but to be... But to give them enough time, like, I'm just trying, I don't really know exactly when businesses are making, like, their big purchases to be prepared for the...
Usually in retail, in July, you're ordering Christmas stuff.
Okay, so, so they would be, like, to be thinking about it right now?
And Andy did suggest, we ask his parents, because he thought his folks ordered a whole supply a year's, a year's supply at once. So, and I did have to go to Mainline the other day, but Rick and Ella weren't there, so... And I didn't think of it at all today to ask them, you know, what they have stocked ahead type deal.
People are ordering in July, you'd probably want to have an effective date, just so that they...
Well, the effective date is right after it's approved, if the town approves it.
The order is not a fat button.
Well, that's why you guys are supposed to be picking an effective date.
Right, that's why we're picking an effective date.
So if you want it January 1st, 2020, we can make it January 1st, 2020.
Is part of the waiting time, giving them time to use up the inventory that they have already?
Or make some kind of adjustment for the future, so they know...
Right, I mean, they know they have to order differently, but...
And order stuff.
But if they have a lot on hand, is it to help them get rid of it, right?
Yeah, probably both.
Both of them.
They're sitting there, they're made, they're growing somewhere.
Because they won't go away in the store either, I mean, if they, it, it would be nice to...
I don't know where it came out, but I saw, where it came out, but I saw somewhere that Colin Wooden is actually fond of.
Yeah, because he had an article, it was paper.
Very understanding of it, I think it's not, actually, it seems really neutral about it, but he's not against it. He's accepting, because he just knows the trends.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen soon, it's gonna happen at the state, federal level, and this is just the start.
Right, and it already has happened across Maine, the other Hannah Fords, which he's affiliated with, so...
Yeah.
And he remembers when everybody switched from plastic, paper and plastic.
That was one thing he stressed in his article, that he remembers that.
Yeah.
It was a big transition.
Right. So are we willing to go with a motion to start enforcing this in six months? And then are we willing to put some kind of fine that would happen after a written warning or a series of written warnings or, you know, shall we sort of think that through and say, well, you get a warning and you get, that has a time, a timepiece with it and then another warning and then a fine or something like that?
I think we can do the effective date and work on the fine portion of it. What do you think?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I'm, yeah, no, I think the effective date, he's got it home tonight, you know. I think the effective date is clearly the, the thing that is, yeah, people believe should know what that is so they can start planning right away. And so they can vote, you know, if that ma, if that matters to their vote and that's important.
You should just have the fines done by the town vote if possible as well.
If you set your fines, if you've made fines now, I mean, you can, and then you've got complaints, you can change them. If someone complains in the six months because it doesn't take the town vote to change, if you do it, right?
Right. And again, hoping that we're not gonna have to... But I think, I think the warnings are also, I mean, are in the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance is spelled out very well.
And who delivers the warnings? It's, it's one of you, right? Or whoever you tell to, yeah.
Well, I would make a motion that the effective date ultimately should be, the ordinance becomes effective six months after approval by town vote. Any violations would start out with a $75 fine. And if you had a third one or a second violation, it would double. Just to get something on board, yeah?
All right, second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Did you skip the warnings?
The warnings are in there. All right, all those in favor? All right, I think we probably make sure that gets...
So six months after approval?
Yeah, six months after approval and warnings, the state ordinance, after a warning period, the state of the ordinance then, then a fee of $75. And then additional violations. All right. I should probably put that as, damn, I'm on the website with the bag ordinance language or something like that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, possibility of changing streetlights to LEDs. I know I read most of this article in the main, it's called the main councilman, it changed names, the main... It's more generational, huh? Anyway, the magazine that we get in our box once a month has a whole article about LED conversions.
Yep.
And, and I talked, did you, Florretta, did you find anything else out, I talked to you earlier today.
I didn't get a chance because everybody talked to me today.
So the question that I had for Florretta was, I'm not sure exactly, and you might know the answer to this, I'm not sure exactly how our street lighting contract works with CMP currently. In other words, do we own the lights, do we rent the lights, do we own, do we lease the poles based to have our own lights? I, I know we pay for the electricity, that's very clear. But do you know how, I don't know how the other piece works?
I, I don't.
Yeah.
I know we signed a contract for X amount of dollars a month per light and... I know, like, the, the light that went into the Parkway intersection down there, we had to supply that hole.
Right, right, and different, different towns actually have different deals. And work with different companies and, but I, I'm, you know, I think, I think it's definitely to our advantage to convert our lights to LEDs, but we need to look at the, I know the electricity savings will be substantial of what the installation cost will be. And it looks like they have a cost estimate here that today, our annual costs, that today's electricity rate is $24,000 a year and that if we switch to LEDs, it'll be $17,000 a year, which is great. And then it says there are no upfront costs, which is even better. So, I don't know what, what does, this is CMP, what is CMP, what would they like for us? Do we need to request a contract to do this?
I think they look at for a 15-year contract.
Yeah, so it would be great, and, and this, oh yeah, 15-year agreement. I'd love to maybe take this till next month and see if we can get some more...
Yeah, because Scott's still doing his inventory.
Yeah, get some more comparison and see if there are a couple different companies out there. It's, I think CMP is not the only company doing LED conversions.
Oh, yeah, I did.
The back of that is, this is the contract.
Oh, okay.
The back of that is the term.
All right, I'll send them that email and I'll call her to see about what the old contract said, because we must have had something from before.
So should we, should we move to table that?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd go ahead and move table that when I'm not around.
Smart, Alex.
Do we have a second? All right, all those in favor? All right, we need to sign the annual town meeting warrant. Right, oh, yeah, there's overdrafts. Thank you.
This was the other question that we sort of had. Article seventeen is to ratify the actions of the overdraft.
Right.
And if we don't have any overdrafts, should we leave that article in there? Part of me says we should and say we don't have any because somebody's going to ask where it is.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're all.
And also we can say, hey, we don't have any overdrafts except for this one.
Right, right.
Yeah, so but.
Every every budget is pulled. This is the one that we thought was going to go over, and it's mostly because of propane and electrical. Because the propane rates went from, I might be exaggerating a little bit, I think they were a buck ninety five to four something, and then they go back down.
Yeah. How do you figure that?
Wow, yeah.
So we just need to approve the, so we just need to approve the overdraft.
Yeah.
I'm on the left.
Yes.
Yep.
Fifteen hundred dollar overdraft for the town garage.
I make a motion that we transfer to cover the overdraft for the town garage.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Good. All right, so now we should move on to approving the annual or signing the annual town meeting warrant. Do you need your copy of that? Do you need, do you know anything further besides that?
No, you need to.
I make a motion that we approve the annual town warrant.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? All right. We also have to sign the SAB forty four warrant, which we really haven't a choice.
There's two of those, and they have several copies that we signed each.
Okay.
I make a motion.
I feel bad because I have to sign them in multiple places.
So I make a motion that we sign the SAB forty four warrant also.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And there is nine copies of each of the side warrants that we signed.
Wow.
My bicep muscle is going to be screaming.
There's one on that, okay.
It's like why we still need to use quills. Do you want to look at how expensive this one is?
I'll scan it.
Propane usage stayed the same.
I looked tomorrow, it was quite a difference in terms of, but I think. Didn't say I'm moving.
Told my friends.
He had that all in the work packet.
Gary, I mean, that's the thirty five hundred units a year average. I'm just curious about it.
Did you get something about the bars? I wasn't here Friday.
I started on the move Sunday morning, so I don't want to put it down.
I start today, you know, it's kind of late.
I don't know, if you find one that I missed, let me know, I think I tried you all. It takes all. Should have done that one or not? No, that one's something.
It's probably mine.
That's that's, yeah, that's not even a signature. That's a location of customers.
Yeah, that's me.
That's you. All right, that's done, that's done. That's not great.
Is it, do you have enough to do?
It was crazy.
Oh, today was good.
Yeah.
What do people want to know?
I even registered because.
Yeah, right away.
Wow.
With a new program even, and I hope I didn't mess it up, we'll find out in the morning.
Sounds like we're just probably a little while, right?
That's a pretty good excuse, I'm going to use that, I'm just going to go with it.
New program.
See what happens.
I'm I'm sure I just drew my car.
Yeah, that lady jerked my money.
Yeah, of course. Stickers?
Yeah.
You didn't give me any stickers.
Yeah, that I did.
I know, I was.
I mean, I got the first customer of the day.
It's crystals.
Yeah, that looks like it, yeah, like the, also like a marathon.
Yeah, if you take them out of the paper book, it's folded right to the page where you guys all have to sign.
Oh, you're so smart.
She waits till you're almost done, Johnny.
I didn't know that you didn't take the paper book off.
Well, I feel that though.
I was trying to figure out why you guys were having a problem with that.
Yeah, 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 so we have, sorry, you've been very patient, I'm sorry, we have Peter right here from Runford and Bridgeton Hospital, and he's just coming to say hello, I think.
Why? That's okay, it's always fascinating for me to watch, you know, the things that come in front of different municipalities that are going around the region, listening to the businesses. It makes those large paychecks, I know you get worse.
The pageantry, the.
Right.
Pure and adult grand tower.
The escorting, limo services too. I I'm very grateful, I'm grateful for the for the work that we do, it reminds me that our partnerships with local municipalities are really important and, you know, just just a way of running a town has a little small intricacies here and there, you know, it's the same with with running a hospital and transitioning leadership can be very disruptive and certainly you've had a very interesting year at Central Maine Healthcare. But I'm very glad to be here, so I I serve as the president for Bridgeton and Runford. I've been in that position since March eleventh. I've spent the last eighteen years of my life working and running small, critical access hospitals that services communities and towns just just like this one, so. You know, I understand what's in front of Buffalo, it's very similar to, you know, many years ago when I sat in front of the Stowe Select Board and talked about where we're going to take the hospital. I recently came from Claremont, New Hampshire, small mill town, textile mill town, where we we lived in the shadow of a world-class academic medical center and sit on the hospitals within thirty five miles, so the challenges are are all very similar. What's great about about here is that both Bridgeton and Runford are two of the top twenty small rural hospitals in the country. So I I did some time and did some studying at Dartmouth and a lot of research about how healthcare is provided, and then we look at, you know, value, which is a combination of quality and and patient engagement, somehow divided by cost. There's a very high value here, that the employees are extremely dedicated, the medical staff is incredibly competent, and there's really, really good care. I I would think that we could use a freshen up on our facility. Our facility has this great balance between elements that are part of the original hospital building, which we we have great pictures of the history and some newer construction, and so right now we're doing a variety of things, going through a master facility planning process and taking a look at our assets, what buildings we have, what the needs are for the future, and how we're going to be able to continue to meet the growing needs. You know, Maine and really northern New England where I spent my time, three, three very unique characteristics about Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine, they are three of the greatest states in the nation, they're continually get older, as you know, it's no surprise to you, they are also three of the highest quality healthcare systems across the country. So we're very fortunate that we live in a place that's aging, that we also live in a place where the best healthcare in the country is given. That doesn't mean we should get comfortable, you know, the United States still ranks eighth in in the world for its healthcare delivery service, and we're in the process of changing that, we're in the process of changing how we get paid, instead of getting paid to do things, kind of a sick care system. We at Central Maine Health are actively working towards getting paid to get, keep people healthy. And it's a, it's a very difficult process, the metaphor that we use is imagine keeping your feet in two different canoes and and how difficult that is, but but that's what we're moving forward. So part of what we need to do is is keep our facilities up to date, recruitment, I mean, we're, again, we're very fortunate, the folks who work at the hospital have a tendency to be very loyal to to the region and the community and stay. The next thing we need to do is make sure that we continue to have a strong primary care base, we have partnerships with folks, DFT Russell, who provide a clinic here, but also look at, you know, expanding some very core essentials, so when I say core essentials, I mean, you have to provide primary care, what we call urgent or walk-in care and emergency services locally. People will not travel for that, we know, research has demonstrated that. And then the thing is that make them work to lab, radiology, and rehab, those things are inherently local, everything else is is really somewhat optional. So our job is to, and what we're focusing on now is how do we make sure that that primary care and those services and partnerships that we have stay very strong so that when you need to see your primary care provider, you can do it and you don't have to travel very far. And then the next level is, so what about the specialists? And, you know, over the course of time, as the workforce has become harder to attract, only about six percent of the folks want to work in rural America who graduate from medical school. So it becomes harder and harder to attract, as I'm sure all of you in your own businesses know, you know, recruitment and retention is complicated. So we're, that tend to bring specialty services more to the bigger centers. We're now starting to see that that's actually not the best camera, and so how do we bring more services back to the rural area? So part of the, the good, the good element of being a system is that we can rotate specialists instead of having three different medical staffs and try to recruit for three different purposes, we have one medical staff, we can better utilize our services. General surgery is a perfect example. We don't have enough volume in this region to have, keep a a general surgeon busy five, four or five days a week, and yet if we were to recruit and be on our own, we'd need one general surgeon, probably two or three if we want round-the-clock service. So we're able to to kind of pay for what we need, so we can buy two or three days a week of coverage from central office and rotate that around, and then we can buy, we can buy, we can schedule things, for example, orthopedics, probably in this area, orthopedics goes up and down.
Season.
Right, bikes too, and and, you know, there's probably enough volume to keep one or two orthopedic surgeons busy, yet we will soon have access to four or five, and there'll be subspecialists, so two of them will be knee and hip joint replacement specialists, one will be a complex foot and ankle specialist, the other will be an upper extremity fellowship train for shoulders, and and so you can see that system by by being able to rotate specialists in and out, we can get access and act as if we're a very big medical center with a lot of subspecialists, cardiologists, oncologists, all of these services, we're now planning about how do we rotate to keep people, to keep people in this region, so they don't have to, not only don't have to travel to Lewiston, they don't have to travel to Portland, they don't have to travel to Maine. We're using telemedicine, we're researching what offers, what availability there are for services for telemedicine services, more and more retail and telemedicine services are are making their way to rural America, this is something we're working on with Congress as well, Washington DC, to break down some of the barriers about if your hospital, if your physician through telemedicine is in South Dakota, how does that work? There's a lot of licensing barriers, we're probably the most regulated industry in the world, even even more so than the nuclear industry, so we're working on all of those things, keeping all of those things locally so that, you know, businesses who want to come to the area know there are strong healthcare services so that, you know, I I know that the number one thing you pay for is people and benefits, and benefits becomes an ever increasing part of your expense budget, so we're ramping up things like occupational medicine. Occupational medicine is a little bit different than traditional medicine, instead of you get hurt at work and you go to your primary care provider, they'll give you the care that's needed, but your primary care provider is going to look at you and say, you feel like you're ready to go back to work? And you may say, no, I'm not ready yet, I'll have two more weeks, and they go, okay, wait you out for two more weeks. That drives up Department of Labor out days, which drives up your health insurance premiums, which also drives up your workers' comp premiums. Occupational medicine, we work for the business, so our job isn't, our responsibility isn't for the patient, it's for the business. And you may say, well, you're going to get people back to work too quickly, actually not, we're very, very careful in our program because if we bring them back too quickly, they get hurt and things get worse. But what we can do is bring them back to light duty, get them off that Department of Labor rule, get them back in the office, and there's one thing I've seen is there's nothing like the motivation of a worker who's who's not doing their own job but doing some light duty at work, they're very, become very anxious to get back to their regular job. You do pre-employment screenings, things like that, how do we prevent people from getting hurt, and then how would we train your staff to be your own best prevention? So all those things, we're moving forward, those programs, it's probably take about a year or two, but they're all designed to actually help businesses reduce their costs. Now, if you're, if you're doing a little bit of math, you're going to go, wait a minute, right? You're helping businesses reduce your costs, that means that's cultivating your own business. And that's kind of what we're in the business of doing, what what we need to do is right now healthcare represents eighteen percent of GDP, that's way too much, we have to figure out how we can represent about ninety percent of GDP, which either means the economy's got to grow really, really fast and we need to stay stable, or we need to figure out how to do a better job that we're doing and less do less of it. So those are kind of the direction that we're moving in. It's it's very exciting, the exciting part of that is the idea that we have a smaller imprint on the economy fits really well with the available people we have to work, you know, the workforce is just crippling us along with everybody else, so if we need fewer people to do less work, to be a smaller footprint on the economy, we can probably make do with what we have now, instead of trying to figure out how to bring in, quite frankly, folks from other countries. We've been bringing in physicians from other countries for years, now we're looking at bringing in nurses and techs from other countries. So our our objective is to figure out how do we work with our existing workforce, how do we change the way we provide care so that we keep people healthy, we keep them out of the shop? And eventually we'll move to a model, we get paid to not see people, we get paid to make sure that you stay healthy, that you have a way to get to work, that you have a way to get to a grocery store, I'm sure the concept of a food desert is something that is not too foreign to you, and and all of the struggles that we deal with in the rural areas, so. That's that's a kind of vision of where we're going, bringing things home, keeping care more local, being partners. I'm a former police officer, I was a firefighter for fifteen years and a volunteer first aid er, so I know what what towns rely on, I know how the world works through the lens of those folks who provide those services on the front line, and I know how important those relationships are, so I'm about partnership and collaboration. I'm going to give you, I can give you my my business card, sorry, I brought one last. Sorry, I've got one last, so you'll have to share. But on there, in addition to my email that has my cellphone number, that's not a work phone. I carry my own cellphone. I'm available 24/7, 360, five days a week. I get on a snowmobile and I'm not anywhere near a cell tower, or five days a year, sorry. But you can call that anytime if you personally have a problem, if you know someone who has a problem, someone needs help, something didn't go right. We're an organization of human beings. We're going to make mistakes. What I want you to do is not judge us about the mistakes we made, but how we address them and how we fix them. And we're very interested in having a partnership with the town and making sure that, you know, you get to meet your goals and we can help with that and we'll meet ours along the way. So we really are open and collaborative. You know, there's a rich history in the organization and it's a true honor to really be a part of it. That's just a brief. I'm happy to, you know, I could go on and on, but you got a lot of work about, you know, my history, my background. I really am here to, so you can see a face, you have someone to reach out to and really answer any questions that you have. If you have any concerns or anything that I didn't provide at that high level, I'm happy to go into detail about.
It certainly seems as though you have a little Energizer Bunny blood in you there. You're very interesting, interested, obviously, and when you hear someone like yourself speak about what they do, you know they're into it.
I like to say, I have the greatest job in the world. I did a variety of different things. I was a coin buyer, a police officer, I did a whole bunch of things. When I worked in healthcare, I was working there for about six months when I was driving to work one day, and I was so excited to get to work. It was this bright December day, and I remember thinking, "This is what I'm going to do for the rest of my life." For actually eighteen years today. That's very interesting. I forgot it was today. So it was actually June 4th of 2001 that I started my first healthcare job. And I wake up every single day excited to do the work. I love what we do. I love the idea that we work in a small town, you know everybody, it's very personal. And I like to say, we don't take care of patients. We take care of our neighbors, our coworkers, and our friends, and our family.
Awesome. Perfect.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your time, and please don't hesitate to reach out at any time. I'll try to come down from time to time just so.
Thank you.
Take care.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Bethel reg board appointment. Looks like we have Lucy Abbott for a spot on the reg board. Lucy is fabulously overqualified.
Yes.
Yes, she will.
May I make a motion that we appoint Lucy Abbott to the reg board?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? She's an inadvertent contributor to WikiLeaks. We're in trouble now.
What was that?
She's an inadvertent contributor to WikiLeaks.
Yeah.
Yeah. She speaks French, Japanese, Arabic, Spanish, and German. All right. Quick claim deed. You're saying pay your taxes. You just have to approve this, or?
Yes.
May I make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed from that block 057-001-001?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Sign away.
Just one?
Give me another one if you want. I'm just kidding. Like.
Did we ever sign the licenses, manuals and all those? I haven't seen them yet.
We don't have to sign them.
Oh, okay.
Well, I do.
We don't. Unless you're going to forget something.
Looks like we had a estimate come in for the front steps of the co-block building. They were very expensive. I'm not sure that, yeah. That's what we want to do. I think as at last meeting, we were also still waiting for Jim Reuter to take a look. But I do know, right now, he's in probably France doing a purvey, so he's got 600 miles to ride or something in 24 hours, 48 hours, something ridiculous like that. He'll probably be tired when he gets back.
Yeah. I did one time. Yeah, that's why, that's, that's good. Steven, yeah. He said he'd give us a proposal. I will give you a bid because I told him that we had talked to Jim about deciding.
Hanging on here.
Keep all the cards.
He didn't want us to see it.
No. He just brought this in this afternoon, so.
Yeah, it seems like if we're going to rebuild these, we should take a pretty strong look at making them, like, need all the ADA requirements, which probably means bringing up the front step in front of the front door up to the same height, looking at like in that door, making it a single door and everything that goes with it if we're going to go to all the trouble of rebuilding the whole thing, which is probably what we should do. But it would be great to get a set of plans that were more specific with widths and heights and all of that and concrete volume so that we could really give someone a clear thing to go on.
Yep. So this bid is just for the, the, the pot?
Yes, it's just as a proposal for the, yeah. Kind of like what Chuck Gaines gave us because that's what we kind of asked for.
Okay.
Yeah. Just to fix what we have there.
Yeah, I mean, it's rebuilding it again. But it's, it's, it's nothing, it's not getting us any new functionality.
Yeah, we need the functionality.
Well, we should, we should make sure we've certainly done diligence to say, "Oh, yeah, we can do that," or, "No, it's going to cost $100,000 and we just really can't do it this time." I mean, we just, we just know that, I guess.
But just so you know, your residents of town would like it done.
Yesterday.
Yeah, three weeks ago.
Multiple, come and wait.
Yeah.
I understand.
But we tell them, you know, we can't design it, we don't design it, we don't.
Well, maybe we should, you know, push a little harder on, maybe it doesn't need to be Jim Reuter, maybe we just pick an architect or someone to look at it and say, here's, you know, it doesn't need to be a huge change in it. The front porch of that building is almost a ramp as it is. I don't think it needs to change dramatically. I just think it needs to, we need to know, oh, we can make this handicap accessible or, no, it's going to cost $100,000, right? Whatever. And we've already evaluated the possible account overdraft before. Oh, I'll just, so report to the town clerk.
Just wanted to update you absentee ballots. We've done, I think, five, six of them. There's not a state election in June, so I don't expect it to turn out to be very high.
When does the possibility of taking out and exercising it at the ballot end?
Five o'clock Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. June 6th. Five o'clock, June 6th. We used to have a vote on that.
Great, thank you. Any other, you know, clerk thing?
No, I think, we have the town reports.
I just.
But we don't have the audit.
Just got the audit this afternoon.
Did you?
At about 4:30. I don't have, he just sent it to me in PDF. Well, yes. We just, just got it.
So we've had the town reports for a couple of weeks, but they don't have an audit in them, so we're waiting, begging. Yeah. By law, they have to be available three days before town release, so.
And I've bugged him and bugged him politely, but after tomorrow, I'm not going to be as polite. I have never been thrown out in my lifetime that it's taken so long and cost so much when he had an agreement with you for $7,500. And it's well over that. It's right around seventeen.
Wow.
And he's going to tell you a part of it was for training with Amy because he was expecting her to do the depreciation schedule and, and I think that is totally wrong because their training is, they email you, she answers them back, a week later they get back to you after you've bothered them numerous times. I have turned them into the state. I haven't heard from the state yet, and I haven't sent them everything that I was, I should send them, showing them what he first sent us back was totally wrong. It's only supposed to have him for one more year, but I was thinking, I want to see how we can get out of that and we'd be better off to pay somebody else just for one year and then put it up to bid again. So I was thinking, because it's going to night, yeah.
Wrong list a year?
Yeah. We should be working on next year.
Never, I mean, when's that again? Never. Usually October, August, October, between August and October of some.
This is our first year with this firm?
Second.
And what did they do last year? Did they do it last year?
Last year, she didn't get it until March, the other March.
Really?
Yeah.
But that was with Christine calling him like every day because we needed it for the town report. The other part about this is I put my town report out to bid with so many pages, like ninety of those pages are the audit. So we pay to have all these pages and now we don't have ninety pages in there, but we're going to have to photocopy them because they have to be in there. So we're going to have to photocopy all that and stick it in the town report as an insert, so.
And I talked around to David Holt a week ago when I came out of my doctor's appointment, and he said, "If you need me to come hold your hand and talk to the board about it, about this auditor," he says, "I will come and support you."
He is such a sweet guy. He really is.
He is. He totally knew that this was not cool.
Yeah. All right, report to the town manager.
Okay, I met with a girl from, she's MDOT, she's region three planner. She came in and she wanted to introduce herself so she could find out if we had any old issues that had been done through the state, whether it be curves and roads or bridges or.
Route five?
Yeah.
Journey to Chanae.
Yeah, anything, she said, because the guy that they had, they had one planner, the governor, the old governor, took them to one planner for the whole state. And the one guy was from the coast and he kind of did more coastal stuff and he didn't come up to the mountains. So now they've hired three more. So she wants to know if we have any wish lists or anything to do with curbs, dangerous roads, stoplights, flashing lights. So she would like us to make a list and contact her and she'll see what she can find out. Like if we had to replace a bridge, say, she goes, "We have plans in the office that had been inspected by the state and they had designed some stuff that was like sitting there for years." She goes, "And we've tried to find them," and they found a lot of them, and see what they can do. So we wouldn't have to pay to get all that stuff done again. So if you have any, let me know. And we will see what happens.
One that comes to mind, I always talk about turning lane or for Chanae intersection. That was one of the items that you guys have on the list.
Yeah.
Ideas.
Yeah.
We got a.
Some of the other ones, but.
That whole project, when they did it, got right to the point where, I mentioned that two or three times, I mean, when the road was being paved, and finally, they managed to stick, what, three feet or something onto the edge of that, just to shut, shut us off.
That is a dangerous spot.
That absolutely is.
A little bit for 25 years, I know.
Yeah. Well, give me some more and I'll contact her precisely how we got, the route five hundred, so.
From here to Waterford.
Yeah.
Like, they paint the white lines for the right-hand side of the lane on the gravel. And they would paint it on pavement. Every year they paved it, every time they repaved it, they've gotten about six, eight inches narrower.
Yes.
So it's kind of, and the edges just are all broken off, so there's no edge of the road anymore.
You're going to do it again this fall?
Yeah. Anyway, she wants me to pass that along. We got the reserve account and what we have at the moment isn't making great money, so I contacted Northeast Bank and Andrew Skoggan. Andrew Skoggan's rate is 1.25%, and Northeast's rate was 0.75%. What we have at the moment is point. Um, what was it, three, three, five, I think? So we're looking to transfer this reserve fund to Andrew Skoggan. And it would be a flux checking based on the ICS suite, the account's 1.25%, and everything would be what we needed.
Yeah, that's a pretty substantial difference. How much do we usually have in the reserve account at any point in time?
This reserve account has, we get it out, and this one is 32,000 and the other one has 210. Right, right. It's going to go over the, what's the threshold, 250, one?
The district's in an ICS suite, it's all covered regardless.
Right, okay.
I don't know if you're familiar with how the ICS suites work, but it's, you're connected to one bank, but they sweep it out to other banks in the union to cover all assets of the town. So you could have all your money in one institution. You can always sign a $10,000 limit that you can sweep up at night to other institutions to protect the assets.
It's fantastic.
Amazing what you can do with that money in that?
Yeah, really.
Well, yeah, it's amazing. When you start digging in, it's amazing what a bank really is.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's not what you think it is.
It's a long.
So we're just looking for permission to switch that over to Andrew Skoggan.
Motion.
I mean, motion that we switch the reserve account over to Andrew Skoggan for the interest rate change?
Yeah, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We've had some issues at the transfer station.
Again?
Oh, yeah. Always issues over there. Mostly the swap shop. We had a little meeting with Scott and I and Jim Largess and Amy from Nury. I threatened to shut it down and Nury had about a hat tech, mainly my ideas. So they were trying, we were all trying to come up with different ways. I mean, we have people from other towns coming and hanging out, getting the stuff, taking it, some have yacht sales, I guess, and it's been backing up traffic supposedly at the transfer station on the weekends. I've been over there a few times, I didn't go this weekend, but I have told people not to hang out there, that we're thinking about closing down if they can't stop putting stuff that's not supposed to be there, and they can't hang out there. I know the guys talked to them about it, probably Scott's talked to people about it. So Jim Largess's thoughts was make a sandwich board sign, put it in front of it. This was kind of his little blurb that he wanted to put on the sandwich board sign, a good-sized sandwich board sign. We'd have to pay to have it done, but I assumed his thoughts on to us.
Yeah, Ross and Cal, neither one.
Yeah. I have no idea what the cost would be at this point, but.
It should be shared.
Yeah, oh, yeah. We'd do it with a percentage of Nury Bethel, you know, because we contacted them, but they ended up contacting me, so.
Just have hand of paper.
There you go, they probably would. They probably would.
But you have to know that into the period.
Yeah. So I just wanted your guys' thoughts on it. I don't know. There's a lot of issues going on over there, so we've got a lot more to come, but I'll wait till after talking for the rest.
Yeah, I mean, there has to be some posting of that.
There is some rules posted on the building. There is some rules posted on the building. I mean, there is a clothing bin right next to the swap shop, they can't seem to hit that. They leave their paint cans that they know aren't supposed to be there. Tons of furniture, what else is there, old medicines.
Food items.
Food items. It's, it's just amazing. And then they fight, people were fighting there a couple of weeks ago.
That's ridiculous.
That's why I said I was gonna shut her down, but...
Shut her down.
You had some spax wrote for that?
Oh yeah, and I knew it would, and I put it on Facebook, thanks, and I was thinking I should shut it down too. Well, we have a lot of people that need this stuff, and I, I understand that, and some of the stuff is great stuff. But the ones that need it can't get it because the other ones are there taking it right off somebody's truck and...
Turning it around and reselling it.
Yeah, and, and some of those that do that shouldn't be in our transfer station, but are we gonna stop them when we don't have somebody at the gate? And the guys are busy or...
Also seems like the district exchange probably does a better job of controlling all that. Slightly different, slightly different product mix, too.
Yeah, so...
I think there's a, this mentality amongst an awful lot of people that it's a transfer station now, it used to be the dump. And somehow, when everything goes in there, it's something, somebody doesn't want, something that's free for the taking. And I, I mean, that... My sense of it is, for the cost that it is involved with the town, the towns as a whole, when, when something goes through that gate, it seems to me that Nury, Bethel, and Hanover own it. Don't we? That's, it's our responsibility after that.
Yeah.
So this mentality, sometimes even with those who work there, that somehow when it came through the gate, it's free stuff or something, I mean, that, that has to be some thought process there. Mangled into people's heads that this taxpayers of Bethel, Nury, and Hanover footing, footing a bill here and comes in and if nothing else, you could be a little bit responsible and try to obey rules and stuff. I, it's amazing, I don't know, if the fight was over, you know, or...
I don't know exactly what, but I just know they were fighting there. But the only other way we got the guy for the kid in the metal bin was the sheriff told me we could tell him, we can't keep him out of there because he's a resident of Hanover. But we could tell him he would be stealing from the town because he was taking stuff out of the metal bin, we get him for that.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Exactly.
And his staff?
Yeah. So that was as far as we got with that, but I think he went to talk to him at home one day, from what I understood. But he's been there since.
And the metal bin is clearly marked that you're not allowed to go in there and take stuff out, that's... I, I can be...
Lean, lean on the sign, grab, you know.
Plus, it's such a huge liability. Like someone falls into that and gets cut, it's...
Yeah.
The metal, but the metal bin is not the swap shop.
No.
That's entirely different.
Yeah. Same idea of people. So I don't know if you want me to look in to see what the cost would be for the sandwich board signs, or if you have any other brilliant ideas of what to do.
Yeah, see what...
See what Ross or some other sign maker in the local area. Give him, give him an example of the mileage and see what they say.
It seems like we need somebody there.
We did talk about that too, yeah.
Swap it, each town takes a different weekend or something.
Well, I asked Amy if she wanted to come spend a weekend and check, meet people at the gate, she didn't like that idea in any way, shape, or form.
But it's a responsibility of the town to do it, so... On that, you know...
Yeah. I did mention it.
Well, I think if they, if the town wanted to stay open, then they, they're gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be a shared responsibility of policing this, because we can't have fights and things like that over there at that.
And then I did, um, I was thinking about getting new stickers, transfer station stickers, because we've had the same ones for twenty years, more or less.
They were, they were those stickers when I got here.
He's ninety-nine, that's all my truck is and it's still got a sticker.
Very hard to see on the vehicle, so, um, the town of Freiburg changes theirs every year and they charge twenty-five bucks a whack.
Wow.
Would you say it brings in twenty-four thousand dollars or something like that every month?
Wow.
But I emailed her for her, where she got her stickers, because I wanna see what they cost and stuff. But I wasn't thinking about changing it.
Guessing they're twenty-four thousand dollars.
So, no, but... And, you know, change the fee for the sticker to start with, because we gotta start somewhere and then we gotta work on the construction debris and everything else, but... I do wanna see what the stickers would be.
Alright, other, other town manager?
Yeah. The fire station, the little incident we had last winter, we've got a couple estimates to fill it repairs, which are quite different than what the insurance lady said. Which, she said we could pick either one we wanted. Um, one was from Chris Olson for twenty-eight hundred dollars. Very, he wasn't too crazy, didn't give us too much information.
Yeah, I, I have a little text message to show you too.
Okay. And the other one was Andy Wheeler for five thousand sixty dollars.
What did the insurance say?
She gave us all this information.
Not just like a dollar, no?
Of course not, this is insurance.
It'd be straightforward.
Eight thousand dollars.
So they'll, they'll pay that anyway? I mean, so if they chose a five thousand dollar, it would be paid for by the insurance anyway? Have you worked with both of these contractors?
Uh, we've worked with one and we've done one job with the other one. I've worked with one.
Can't imagine which one.
On Dan's plate, right?
Yeah, he's gonna need insurance, at least he's not gonna have it. He didn't act like he wants to do that, I can't believe he's gonna have it.
Yeah, once and then stop. Okay, it's half the dollars.
Yeah.
He wants to do the job, he wants to do the job, but he doesn't have the insurance covered?
Well, he, I don't think he realized he needed insurance, so he decided he was gonna work for the town.
Oh.
And he would be pushing for the insurance, so yeah, he didn't need insurance.
Alright, so that makes it pretty clear, should we have a motion on it? Do we need a motion on it?
For what?
I think a motion to...
Have Andy Wheeler?
Yeah. Have Andy Wheeler, he'll work on the fire station.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
You got another job.
Maybe offer some extra cash? Do it and report on it, same. I'll have Allison come over, get a shot of this work. Make your own news.
Toby and Rick went over to the Cameron house, made sure to do their findings. I had sent the attorney, or did I send the attorney? I had wrote to him, because back in March, you guys weren't gonna make any decisions until Mark and Toby had got over there to inspect. He, uh, I don't think he's supposed to change anything, because it's still six units, so they still, uh, should be...
The, if, so the argument here was that they had changed from being condominium to not being condominium, and so therefore they should be on just one building, but, and then we're back to dwelling units again?
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, it looks like they, they're six units, no matter what.
Right.
They all got kitchens, four bathrooms, and bedrooms. And according to the dwelling thing here, they're six units. Didn't he ask for a, um, a rebate or something?
Well, yeah, they thought they were gonna get a refund.
Because they ended their condominium.
Right. And that really doesn't make any difference, it...
They're still six dwellings, so they're still taking, holding, holding hitches out.
Right.
You got six kitchens, you got six units.
Those are pretty interesting dwelling unit definitions. I would say Nury and, Nury and Greenwood are more specific than Thomas. That's probably the kind of direction I'm going.
We need a motion on this, or?
Well, yeah, because I gotta write back to this wonderful attorney eventually. I haven't heard from him since I sent that letter back in March, but by April, I sent the letter, April thirty.
Is it really an agenda item? I mean, I'm not trying to get around it.
No, we can put it off, John.
Yeah, why don't we table that one for another?
Yeah, I think it really ought to be an agenda item.
Yeah.
Alright, um, any other town manager?
I just had an airport update, we had a meeting last week, because we had a couple of people that wanted to do hangars. And now I gotta have another meeting with that budget, but break up that, but I was... They helped me out with the hangars, um, I contacted Standec and where they thought they could build this big hangar, they cannot. So they might have to do some more improvements at the airport to get this hangar. And then I had wastewater treatment plan update, of course they started the project, we had our first pay rec meeting. Um, one of the comments Amy made was Teabuck might not have ran things quite in-depth enough, so they were trying to get us to pay more, but RD and the guy from Scott Emery from the state said, uh, nope. It was all in the engineer specs and it was all right there and they, somebody had dropped the ball somewhere.
That's your responsibility.
Yeah, that's what they said, so that was all good. Um, Chuck Mason called, he wanted to know, um, he didn't say what church he was from, but he wanted to know if the church could do anything for the town who's from the... He wanted to know if there's anything they could do for the town in any way. I said, well, I don't know. But I would bring it up.
What do you mean?
We just thought that the church could, if the town needed something done.
They get full service programs?
Yeah.
They gave me, thank you, lunch and to...
They're the ones that did the lunch?
Yep. To, to the town crew and MDOT local camp this, this spring.
Nice.
Yeah, cool, I can loan up a free ticket.
Now that's an idea!
The thing I'm leaving, I guess.
Good idea.
Um, and then Tabitha Stewart was in today. She was looking for permission to have a bench made in memory of Haley. And they would like to place it on the common. And they'd like to have the dedication, um, September twenty-third. And I, I asked her if she was thinking granite or wooden, and I just kinda threw out the, I would say granite, because anything wooden, you know, people are gonna damage eventually.
Or it'll just...
Right. But she was looking for permission to do something like that.
Are there any memorial benches on the common?
There's none on the common, but there is one by the library.
And of course, there's a bunch of them, yeah.
We're on the commons, we should...
Well, there are a bunch of, we could just, it could just replace one of the existing benches.
Oh.
Because the, the existing benches are just the, the metal sides with the woods.
Oh, you need those?
Yeah. It's a tradition, it happens every selectman's meeting. Getting pelotonized, that's. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's that, that, uh... I would just say that whatever, whatever, they would just need to discuss bench designs and construction with the town to make sure it's something that's gonna last and not interfere with the moment, the usual.
So do we need a motion for her to do that, or, or Tabitha, or what? Just give her permission?
I would say if you're gonna give her permission, you have to.
And again, they don't get in trouble doing motions on, kind of afterthoughts here, if they don't get on the agenda, somebody to say, well, I really do.
Yeah, it seems like this isn't till September, so it seems like we're safe to table this until July.
Yeah, she just kinda wanted, um, about ordering it.
Right, so maybe she could come talk to us in July?
Sure.
That'd be great.
That would be great, yeah.
Give us some design thoughts. Alright, moving forward. Is that all for town manager?
Um, other than what a district called, they are in the process of moving. Today they were supposed to have the power shut off down there, Donnie didn't want us to go in this weekend, so that tearing out the building. Because they still got a few things left to do.
We can't wait for it to fall out of its own way, no?
If they move everything out, it probably will.
It might just fall out.
Well, that's kinda what's my thought.
Posted notes, you know.
It'll fall over our zones.
What is holding that thing out?
I always wondered, every time I went in there.
Yeah, okay. I told them, no, you don't have to worry about it, we don't move that fast. So, we're good.
Alright, good, I, there was one thing that came up to me, and again, we can move this to next month, but the Muhusik Pathways is planning to close on the Community Forest purchase in June. This is June, um, later in, later in the month, and they are looking for a select board member to sit on the Community Forest Advisory Board. In addition to a board member from Pathways and local residents and I don't know if anyone else is interested in that, I'd be happy to do it, but I just I don't even know if we, they're just looking for a select board member to be representative of the town to that.
Maybe we need to wait till after lunch?
Yeah. Andy might be interested. Um, but anyway, so I, that's another issue. Alright, any other selectman's issues? His goals?
In Andy's letter to us, he mentioned about the article in the newspaper about the ordinances that were supposed to be written on, and it wasn't clear enough.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, you wanna, you wanna tell them or? Yeah, go ahead, keep going.
So, he says, I'm, I'm trying to find the letter in here. Thank you. I've spoken to several citizens who have been confused on the matter. We need to make it so that everybody understands if they vote yes, they're voting for the ordinance.
Yeah, move restrictions. Right, isn't that correct or not, like, what do I guess?
Yeah, there's only, I think there's only one, so I guess the issue, and, and other people brought it up at the public hearing, was that unlike most ordinances that go through town, most ordinances strengthen restrictions. This ordinance, by passing it... This ordinance, by passing this ordinance, we're actually saying yes. And then we're adding, I think, just a distance restriction, a, a, an additional distance. Taking a thousand, yeah.
Instead of the 500.
But the, maybe the more important piece of the whole picture is that approving the ordinance makes it so that that can, that the, whichever activity they're voting on can happen. If they vote no on the ordinance, that means that that activity cannot happen by state law, which is backwards from the way most things happen. So it's really important that people understand that. But a vote, to vote down the ordinance does not remove restrictions. It says no, period. And a yes says yes, and we've strengthened this one restriction, but pretty much we're saying yes. And that's, that's pretty different than how things usually happen from state to town.
Okay.
Usually state passes a law and then the town passes a law that makes it more restrictive. In this case, the town is saying yes, which is a little weird.
I can issue that, we can put something in the papers, wait for me to make sure something gets in, maybe a deal. We'll work on it tomorrow.
That'd be great. Thank you.
That was it.
Could put one in about both of those if you want, just to get people reminded that, hey, this is happening, you know, just to get as much people out as possible.
Yeah.
So they can do that.
Yeah.
Get one in the plastic bag too, might as well, we can put it right on the front or something.
Right, and then you can add that case that we, you know, the time...
Yeah, absolutely, now we'll just do something like that, then we'll take one of the type up.
That'd be super helpful.
Cool, thank you.
All right. Any other concerns? I mean, we have a big concern and that's that this is it, this is not his last. Unless it's anybody that's running again next year, but...
I think that would be a...
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Yeah, I know, I know there's a car circulating there somewhere and I know there's cupcakes circulating.
Oh, it's gone, oh, man, put this one up.
I seriously considered baking a cake and then I thought, no. I didn't want to be responsible for, you know, a select board plagued by food poisoning.
Yeah, we have to finish the journals.
I'm sorry, thank you. Approval of dispersments.
I make a motion that we approve Journal 2019-7, 21-766, and Warren's 2019-46, 47, 41, 42.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, we do not have any questions for this session. Any motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
You're officially done.
Wow.
Officially done.